There we go. Calling to order the Monday, July 1st, 2019, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 12. I know there's some different versions and wanted to make sure that the council and resident had a chance to, you know, fully vet the most up-to-date plan and provide some feedback before adopting it, though would certainly like to thank the Environmental Advisory Committee for the incredible work they've already done in taking this up. At the next meeting, would certainly allow resident feedback and also to incorporate more of their thoughtful suggestions, so.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Any additional discussion on the agenda? So we have a motion to approve our agenda with the removal of item number 12. No additional discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. We have reached the citizens' comments portion of our evening. When you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda, council members will not engage you in discussion. And if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Any takers? Sure. Oh, no. Okay. All right. Seeing nobody trying to get up to the microphone or trying to get out of their rows, we will move on from the citizens' comments portion, and we will get into our order of business. First, with tonight's consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, June 17, 2019. Ordinance number 00619, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to add new Article 14 marijuana establishments to Chapter 30 Businesses of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to prohibit marijuana establishments as defined in the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act to specify a sunset date and to prescribe a penalty for violations. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Are there any corrections or additions? Okay. Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. We'll now move on to our regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 1 on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda, we'll move on to item number 2, please.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation by Mothers Against Drunk Driving Mad, recognizing Officer Brian Anderson as Officer of the Year.
Okay.
Daddy?
You don't talk yet, Brian.
I don't want to.
We'll get... Oh, you're gonna have to. We'll get there. We'll get there.
I'll give a little bit of background if I could.
Thanks, Chief.
The City of Berkeley and the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Mad State of Michigan office recognizes Brian Anderson for his impaired driving, which is both drunk and drug-driving, driving enforcement in 2018. He made the most impaired driving arrests in the state of Michigan, having more than 50 than the next officer that who made the arrests, total of 117, which is also the most in the history of the City of Berkeley. Included in that total were 17 repeat offenders. On June 7th, 2019, he was presented the MAD Lifesavers Outstanding Officer Award for his performance. He dedicated... He dedicated... His dedication to make impact to this degree, especially in a small community like Berkeley, while also fulfilling his responsibilities as a police officer, firefighter, and medical first responder, is incredible. I can't say that enough. It is estimated that over 10,000 people are killed every year in impaired driving crashes and additional 290,000 are injured. There's no doubt that his efforts have increased the safety for the City of Berkeley and potentially saved some lives. Included in that total of 117 were several people that were driving with children in the car, several people that were the super drunk, which was .17 and higher. Just incredible. And not only does Brian do a great job, but the department as a whole, for as small as we are, made 236 arrests last year for impaired driving. So it's really incredible. It's... I would say, and if Brian were gonna talk a lot, he'd probably mention this, but I know he doesn't want to say much, so it really is a team effort. His squad, you know, quite honestly, if everybody did this, there'd be nowhere to take runs, nobody to take medicals, nobody to respond to fires, so it really is a team... It really is a team effort. His squad mates, you know, when he's in writing reports or tied up on arrests, they're out on the street remaining while he does that. So it's absolutely incredible. So I have Sue Strong and Brandon Coleman from MAD here.
Well, Brian, congratulations. How long have you been doing this?
Five years here.
Five years to be...
Can we get as close to the microphone as possible so people at home can hear? Everybody wants to hear.
Well, to be very dedicated to do the same thing over and over is tremendous.
Yeah.
So congratulations on this, and hopefully we'll see you back next year at the luncheon. And you know that you're eligible to go to the OHSP 2020 Summit for next year? Okay. All right, great. Congratulations.
Does he get to make a speech?
Yes, he does.
Thank you.
Hold on. All right. Hold on, hold on. Great. Brian, come on back up closer to the microphone. So this is obviously something that's incredibly important. We are honored to have you and to have the representatives from MAD here today, but it's really a testament, as you mentioned, to you, but also to our department. But in particular, the amount of folks, the amount of lives, the amount of injuries that you have most likely prevented with your diligence is one of the reasons why Berkeley is such a safe city. You, on your own, kept 117 of those off, off the streets, over 50 more than the next closest competitor. Look, it's... It's one thing to win state championships, but you won a state championship for something that saves a lot of lives, too, and it's incredibly important. I know that my colleagues would certainly agree. So we thank you for your dedication, your service, as well as our entire squad here who just do an absolutely tremendous job of keeping Berkeley the safe city that it is. Is there anything else you want to add, Brian?
Again, thanks to my coworkers, my family for their support with all the courting, and I guess that's it. Thank you.
Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Wanted to read it, yeah.
Brian?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You're not getting away to work either.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all for being here, and as I'm sure most of you saw, many of the officers who were able to make it were here as well to support Brian. A number of them are outside right now, some of them are in here, but it just shows the camaraderie that our department has. All right. We will now move on to item number 3, Ms. Boucher.
Motion number M4819, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M4819?
So moved.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner.
Ladies Mayor, as you recall, annually, many of our appointments, they end on a June 1 timeline, no matter the term, no matter the length of the term, they all end up, I'm sorry, expire on a July 1. And so what you have here is a full slate of the boards and commissions with expiring terms in front of you. As we've talked about in the past, our processes, council members review each and every application that comes across to the clerk's office. Council members will reach out to applicants, they'll talk to them, and then forward to me their preferences for each of the various boards and commissions. I tally those and then report back to council who the preferred candidates are. I can read through these this time?
Sure.
All right. I'll read through each one. For Board of Review, we've had Ms. Karen Smith, who's up for reappointment to a full term expiring July 1 in 2023. Our Building Code of Appeals, Chris Cleveland and James Yates, both reappointment to a full term ending July 1, 2024. Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee, Sue Suttrero and Liz Petrie and Brandon Alger with a... I'm sorry, Liz Petrie and Sue Suttrero both with a reappointment to a full term ending July 1 in 2021. Brandon Alger with an appointment, first term, full term, to a term expiring in 2021. Downtown Development Authority, Scott Francis, at-large member, appointment to a full term expiring July 1, 2023. Christine Gross, 12 Mile member, appointment to a full term expiring July 1, 2023. Two options under the third position, Mr. Brian Zifkin for an at-large membership appointment to a full term on July 1, 2023, or Ms. Amanda Ramirez, also an at-large member with appointment to a full term expiring in 2023. Next up is the Environmental Advisory Committee, Jessica Heath, with a reappointment to a full term expiring in 2022. Roman, and I apologize, but Lachfitch, I hope, probably not, with an appointment to a full term expiring July of 2022. Historical Committee, Kathleen Schilling? Schilling?
Schilling.
I'm sorry.
You got it.
You got it stuck in there somewhere. With a reappointment to a full term expiring in 2022. The Library Board, Christopher Renee, with a reappointment to a full term expiring July 1, 2024. A note on this, he was just appointed in May to fill a term, and so, which I'm sure is why the name seems so familiar and why the application is in there in the way that it is. Planning Commission, Mark Richardson and Lisa Kempner, both with reappointments to a full term expiring in 2022. Jeff Campbell with an appointment to a full term expiring in 2022 as well. The Technology Advisory Committee has two members up for reappointment, Anna Leptik and John Correa, both reappointments expiring in 2021. Seth Jones with an appointment to a full term expiring in 2021. And then Mr. Dave Marriott, an appointment to a vacated term which would expire July 1 in 2020. Almost done, I promise. All right. Last two. Tree Board, Mr. Robert Pankala with a reappointment to a full term expiring July 1 in 2022. And then Zoning Board of Appeals, you've got, remember, you've got full members as well as alternates for full membership. Ryan Gesun, full member, and Greg Butts, full member, both reappointments expiring in 2022. Joe Krug is up for an appointment to a term expiring in 2022 as well. Joe currently serves as an alternate to that board. And then the alternates, you have Maria Ward, an alternate member who is up for a reappointment to a full term in 2022, and Michael Hanschett, who is an alternate with an appointment to a term expiring in 2022 as well. Each of the applications are included in your packet for review.
All right. So we have obviously a number of incredible folks who are volunteering their time to the city, and I'll tell you that in past years, we were not so fortunate to have this number of volunteers. It was very common for us to almost have to beg up here at every meeting for the various boards and positions that were still vacant, but we have... Our community is very engaged, very energized right now, and we have a ton of great people. We find ourselves in the other spot now where we have too many people for every one of the potential vacancies that we have on these boards and commissions, and that's not a fun place to be, certainly for us, but at the end of the day, you know, we just hope that we continue to have the kind of support from our residents that we have and the engagement to want to be involved in the community. And again, these are all volunteer positions. This is folks volunteering their time, most often nights, sometimes during the day, once a month, sometimes twice a month, to help the city conduct their business, because if we did not have these boards and commissions, Berkeley would be a very different place. We're always built on our residents and our residents being engaged, and this is probably the best example of that that we can show. That being said, we have a number of folks here that are appointed to full seats or vacated full seats coming up in July. We only have one board that there is, at this point, more folks than the spots available. So at this time, I will open it up for council discussion if there's anything on the process or anything in particular before we figure out what ultimately we're going to do with that last spot. So anybody have questions, comments, aside from thank yous to all of these folks? And a number of them are here tonight as well, which we certainly appreciate. Any discussion? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to echo your sentiments. This is an amazing set of folks who either have in the past and will continue or are raising their hand for the first time to help contribute to the city. Very pleased with this, and I echo your thoughts about the value and the contributions that these folks bring to our city. My only thought here is just from the DDA perspective, the item on the table. The board is structured differently than the other committees in the sense that they have, you know, most committees have like a chair and a vice chair and things like that. They have a more organized structure with subcommittees and things like that, and their process is to leverage their folks, the volunteers, first through subcommittees so that they understand the inner workings of the city and the DDA and all that kind of cool stuff. And then that board makes a review of the applications and offers up their selections that they've worked from within as a team. And so one of those folks is on the list here, and so just from a process perspective, just wanted to make sure that we were aware that the DDA, unlike the other boards, has a more robust process to include even more folks than we see on the board to help move our downtown forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah. I had a chance to speak with all the DDA applicants, the four under discussion here, specifically with Brian Zifkin and Amanda Ramirez. I think Ms. Ramirez is nice, she's involved, she's very dedicated, but I have a strong feeling that Mr. Zifkin has a much better understanding of the necessary oversight that the DDA board reads, needs right now. And I think very strongly, the entire city's gonna benefit if we have someone from the outside to provide an outside perspective to the DDA. So this is just in no way to denigrate Ms. Ramirez, but I do feel that Mr. Zifkin, you know, has more of the skills that the board needs right now.
So I certainly appreciate your comments, and just so that everybody is aware, you know, when we get into a situation where council has to make a decision, oftentimes it ends up where somebody or some folks are advocating for somebody else, and then it always ends up happening that you end up advocating, unfortunately, not for somebody else, and that is not where I want to see us go from here. I mean, we can all certainly have our time to speak if we want to, but I would rather, you know, just, again, we're dealing with volunteers, and yes, we have preferences and we've made selections, and we're gonna go through that process in a minute. If you have specific comments, certainly you can make them, but I want to try to keep this as much without having to get into pros and cons of volunteers, if possible.
So as a former vice chair of the DDA and having been part of the DDA when the process was implemented to vet volunteers through the organization committee, I've seen that process work. I believe that, it is my opinion, that we need to honor the process, because when you choose to not honor it and run roughshod over process, chaos reigns. So I... This, people aside, I am just pointing out that there is a process in place, and I believe that it's a good one, and I believe we need to pay attention to that process and respect the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, oh, did you have another comment? Yeah.
Councilmember Henin? Speaking to the process, it is the DDA's own process. It isn't one that is in the legislation. It is simply that it is the city managers to appoint and ours to confirm. Other boards also make advisory recommendations. The communications boards has in the past, the library board has for a very long time, but it's a process they chose to make, and it's fine, but it is advisory.
If I may, Your Honor?
Yep.
Thank you. Continuing the process conversation, who knew? As mentioned, our city manager is involved in the selection of the volunteers or the proposal of the volunteers. He also sits on the DDA, he is the secretary of the DDA, and my understanding was when they reviewed the applicants, it was a unanimous vote in support of the applicant that the DDA's process is suggesting that we follow.
That's true. That's all true. So seeing where this conversation appears to be headed, I'm going to attempt to bring a little bit more efficiency here. So what we have ultimately is four names for three spots as it relates to the DDA. We're all aware of this. We've all seen this. So we need to take a straw poll of council, and Mr. Attorney, I guess I'll let you weigh in officially on this. If we do that, and one of the names gets four votes, that name just becomes part of the overall motion, M4819. Do we need to do a separate amendment, or because we have everybody here in an "or" fashion, we can just make them, you know, make the selection and then go from there? Is that fair?
Yes, I think. Excuse me. Yes.
Okay.
Charles Terrell from Berkeley, a couple of questions about the process. I was at that DDA board meeting where the three people were discussed. My understanding is that there were at least three others who were not interviewed by the operations committee. So what criteria was used to distinguish who they would and who they would not interview? And I guess the firmest part of the process is the process written. Where is it written? If a process is not written, it does not exist. It may be the way we've done it in the past, but without a reference and being able to point to it tonight, right now, saying, "The process is here, here it's written," we don't have a process. And I will disagree with those who say that there is a process and that the process is being followed, because there is no process. It's not written. It does not exist. So I'd like those two things addressed and answered. Where is the process written, if it's written? I don't believe it is. And what happened to the three people who had also applied and were not given the consideration of an interview by the operations committee?
So Chuck, what I can tell you tonight is that we are operating under the council's process, and that's how we've gotten to this point. The DDA has the processes that we've discussed, but I mean, we're not gonna legislate their process. We have our... And that's why we're gonna accomplish this.
Absolutely. That's what I asked you to go by, but the discussion by at least two members up there has been to the DDA's process and to the sanctity of the DDA's process, and I maintain that it does not exist.
Okay.
And I maintain that at least three people were denied the opportunity to even be heard.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments?
Mr. Mayor, just note on process, as I said earlier, all the applications that are received through the city clerk's office are made available to the city council for their review and purview. So nobody was denied an opportunity, any more, any less, from a council standpoint than anybody else.
No.
It's worth noting that.
Our process. Yes. That's what we're talking about today, is our process. All right. So we know that we have four names. There is an "or" here at the end. We have Brian Zifkin and Amanda Ramirez. Straw poll is fine if we just go around. As soon as we get four names, we can add them to the...
I think you could do that, or perhaps another way that might even be more efficient is you've got four names for three spots. You could do, on a roll call basis, council member by council member, each council member names their three nominees, and...
Well, we, I mean...
Those who gain, any one of those who commands a majority of council for votes will be automatically appointed.
Well, we already have two that are... They're not listed as the "or," so they are the two here, and then only the last one. So why don't we just do that process just for the last?
That's fine. That's fine.
All right. So Ms. Boucher, I will ask you to just do a quick roll call vote, and all we're looking for is the last name of your preferred, at this point, DDA member for the final seat, and once we have four votes, we will move on and vote on the motion as a whole. Everybody clear on the process? Talked a lot about process. Is our process good? Okay. Ms. Boucher.
Gavin.
Ramirez.
Henin.
Zifkin.
Stedman.
Zifkin.
Baker.
Ms. Ramirez.
Blanchard.
Zifkin.
Dean.
Ramirez.
And Turbrack.
Zifkin. We now have a full slate of DDA members. We have full slates on the other boards and commissions. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M4819?
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. M4819 has been approved. Now move on. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 4 on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M4919, matter of authorizing Goddard Coatings Company, 490 South Ovdeich Road, Pontiac, Michigan, 431, to repair cracks at the community center tennis courts at a cost not to exceed $17,195. This expenditure will be charged to account 614-950-974000.
Mr. Manager? Oh, sorry. We need a motion to approve that first. Is there a motion to approve M4919?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Henin, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Now, Mr. Baumgartner.
Ladies Mayor, we're talking specifically about the tennis courts that are next to the community center, between the community center and Anderson Middle School. Your packet on this includes a memo crafted by Parks and Recreation Director Teresa McCarleton, as well as the results of the bid process that took place just recently. This is, I want to note one thing particularly, this is an item that was not budgeted for. We actually had a capital improvements item for this, for a complete rebuild. Situation was what it was, the winter and the use was what it was, and so we had to actually bump up the repairs here. So again, things happen that aren't anticipated. If you consider the length of the budget process, we're now about half a year out, and so certainly situations do change, and unfortunately, this was one of those items. So, but in addition to all of her many extra levels, areas of expertise, Teresa's also an expert in tennis courts as well, so.
That's a strong play there. Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. As I mentioned in my memo and as the city manager mentioned, this is an unbudgeted item before you, which is not typical. typical. However, managing 28 facilities, sometimes your capital plan does not exactly match the time of use and taking care of those facilities. So, after seeing some significant cracking, that was particularly impacting one of our courts. That was making it basically not MHSAA, which is the High School League, or USTA playable. It's certainly fine for recreation use, but for those uses, I spoke with the city manager and made a new plan to invest in this right way sealant, which should get us two-plus years to deal with the cracking and will really coat those tennis courts. And then in the future, what we plan to do is to look at grant funds, which were used for the courts actually in 1999, to do a whole resurfacing in two to three years. I think it's the best course of action right now, given our capital budget and our capital plan. Goddard Coatings is certainly one of the premier agencies that does this. They did Beverly Hills Park, similar type scope of work, and I looked at that and it's still in great shape a year and a half later. They also did Clarkston High School. I spoke with them and it's also in great shape. So, I think we're, we're in the right way. I think that this will go along when fixing some of the problems, making them more playable and, you know, happy to get this done now. In our bid, we did say we wanted the work completed in 30 days. Given the timing of the year and how busy the companies are, we may give them a little bit of time, possibly to that 60-day mark, but the work will be completed in four to five days. So, it will be done for the fall season and anybody playing in the fall.
Questions for our Director. Obviously not something that we anticipated, but something that we have to take care of.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I feel like I know the answer to this, but I remember during the Community Center discussion that if we move the tennis courts, the state grant would have to then be refunded. And again, like I said, I feel like I know the answer, but is there any state help for maintenance?
Not, I mean, there, yes, there is for maintenance, but for actually like resurfacing and redoing the courts, it's more likely for something in a larger amount. They'll probably look at that and that's where I hope to have a chance to apply for those in two to three years, given that we are just now receiving another grant. So typically for those smaller maintenance costs, no.
Okay.
Not from the state. Certainly there may be other agencies. And it's not that we would have to refund, by the way. It would be that, it would affect future grants that we could apply for. We would get negative points.
Got you. Thank you very much. Additional questions? Thank you, Teresa, for being here for this item and I think the next item as well tonight. Any other, seeing no additional questions from anybody else, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 4919?
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman, I'm sorry, Turbrack.
Yes. All right. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 5019, matter of authorizing installation of softball fencing at Merchants Park Fields 1 and 2 at a cost not to exceed $15,976 from KB Contracting, PO Box 394 West Branch, Michigan, 48661. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 614-950-974-000.
Is there a motion to approve M 5019? So moved.
Support.
By Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Not much to say here. The packet again includes the results of a bid that was put out on a mitten as well as a memo outlining the need for this and the justification for the installation.
Teresa.
So, once again, this is a budgeted item. This is the initial stage of transforming Merchants Oxford Park. This is the stage that is happening this year and I'll talk more about future stages in the next agenda item. But this is an item, we have talked about really wanting to fence off those fields to make them look more professional, to really set the stage for what's outfield, what's not, so that people feel comfortable walking through because right now you don't know. I think it's something that's really needed. Those are our two fields that we use for softball in the city and our softball league grew this year. And, and I think that this will just be a really nice item to add and again, really start to identify what is in that park and what's the baseball field and what's not. We're excited to get this done this year. We've gone with the lowest bid. We did receive four bids. The lowest three were all relatively close in terms of price. I did vet the lowest bidder. I spoke to three other references. They all spoke very highly. They completed work efficiently for two of them ahead of schedule, for the other one right on schedule, not big changes in terms of the work and similar type work in the city of Dearborn and one of the communities on these sides. So, I feel really comfortable. I've spoken with them. They're very excited to get started and can't wait to call them, hopefully tomorrow and tell them it's a go.
What, what are the distances? How far do I have to hit a ball to hit it out?
200 feet.
Okay.
And it's six feet on the sides and then it'll be four feet in the outfield, which I think looks a little, just has a better look to it and a better feel to it. It will have the plastic coating on the top and I did speak with Moms Club about whether they preferred four or six in the outfield and they preferred four feet as well.
Awesome. Thank you. Additional questions, comments about this? As Teresa mentioned, this is a budgeted item and it is, you know, step two, I think, after we did some drainage work over there and now we're doing this. And in the past, those of you that have seen this, you know, from time to time, we've had to put up temporary fencing for various tournaments or games that happened there. That will no longer be a concern moving forward. And as the Director mentioned, we'll have pretty clear delineations now of what is the field and what is area for residents to hang out and to enjoy and watch the game. Are we going to put grandstands in centerfield by chance? No.
Not right now, no.
Okay. All right. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 5019?
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 1819, matter of adopting a resolution accepting the terms of the DNR project agreement and commitment to matching funds.
Is there a motion to approve R 1819?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
So, again, more kudos are owed to the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Department. They received confirmation that their grant application's now been approved through the Park Service as well. So, it's yet another confirmation that they did a fantastic job and that our good things are happening in our city. As, as a part of that, as you'll see in the memo included by the Director, we need to pass a resolution outlining that we accept some of the terms that they have as well as that we've budgeted for those matching funds. As you recall from our previous budget discussions, we have in fact done so.
Teresa, hi.
So...
Thanks for coming.
Before you again, the City Council committed to matching funds, actually to funding the entire project with revenue coming in over a year ago in order to apply for the grant that was needed. Then we received word from the state that we had been approved in December of 2018, knowing that we needed final approval from the National Park Service. We then had to submit more information to the National Park Service with a four-to-six month timeline. We've hit that six month and we received word on Tuesday of last week that the National Park Service has approved funding for this work. The work, the money will then be filtered down through the DNR. Project agreement is the first step in, in accepting this and also the resolution by council committing to the matching funds. Again, I did ask the, our grant coordinator if you had to commit again since you've already committed and they did say, yes, you had to do so in this way. We've carried forward our funds from the last budget year into this budget year in order to make that happen and we're really excited to continue with this process. It has been a long process. People have been hearing about this development for a very long time. So, I know that they're anxious for the work to get started. Given the timeline, given the funding from the state, what we're looking at now is working with our engineers to go out to bid for a total project, including the grant-funded items, the restrooms, the walking path and the splash pad. In addition to the budget that was approved by council for new play equipment in this capital budget, we'll bid everything out with our engineers over the winter and then work will get started on all four of those things in the spring of 2020 with a completion date of summer of 2020. So, that's what residents can look for in terms of timing for those three items I just mentioned, as well as new play equipment to replace the equipment there now.
Excellent. Questions for Ms. McCarleton? Councilmember Dean?
I have comments and questions. First, I want to just commend you, Teresa, and your staff on this incredible job. I know this is no small undertaking and for you to be the grant writer, that is a monumental task. Thank you for doing that and I know you appreciate the staff that you have because they're great and they're supportive. In reading this entire contract, there are, there are lots of things that need to be monitored and reported on. Who will be taking care of that?
So, that'll be myself.
Okay.
And I feel confident in my ability to do that because the process of applying for the grant and doing the NPS stuff is very tedious and so I will do that. Again, we do have our engineers working through all of the initial stages, but then as we go forward, making sure that the signage is right, making sure that the state has everything they need. We do work with a really great grant coordinator from the DNR. They're super accessible. I exchanged several emails with her today and that's really helpful and I'll continue to do that. I have no problem asking questions to make sure that we're on top of everything.
Excellent. And I have all the confidence in the world in you as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Henon?
Yeah, similar to the grant we got for the tennis courts, this grant seems to, you know, do we have to maintain the splash pad forever or, you know, can there be a time where if it uses its usefulness, we can retire it?
Sure. It's a great question. And what the state says is basically, you do have to have a maintenance plan going into this, right? So, for the next five to 10 years, we have that maintenance plan. What they say is that recreation does change. So, at some point, if this becomes no longer recreation needed in the city of Berkeley, if we receive in writing from the state that we want to change that recreation amenity and if they say we can go forward, then we can do that. So, you do have to receive in writing. All they say is that the public space where everything is taking place has to remain recreation. It doesn't say what it has to be used for.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a quick comment. I got a laugh out of one item in here. Comment that says, bury all overhead utility lines. That's going to take a lot of dirt. You got lines 20 feet in here and you got to bury them. You got to take up almost all your park space. I don't think they wrote that correctly, but I'm sure I know what they meant.
Yes.
But please don't bury them.
We will not. Thank you.
No. Thank you. We don't want that. Anything else? This is a good thing. It's been years, certainly in the works. Last year, I'm sure most of you recall, we were close, didn't get it. This year, went the other way. We were able to, to receive the grant and now developing this park, which again, we've talked about, it's very rare for cities, entering cities to, to find a new park, to be able to develop a new park. And we have that opportunity at Merchants Oxford. And one of the first steps is probably going to be figuring out what we're actually going to call the place.
Yes, please.
Should be up there on the list somewhere. But seeing now actually happen, being able to approve this today is going to be tremendous for, for our residents. The amenities that you mentioned are amenities that we currently don't have in any of our parks, aside from a walking path. So, it is something that we are looking forward to and have been planning for a long time for this moment. So, thank you for all of your hard work in your department and the board, the rec board, the advisory board, everybody who's had a part in this over the, the number of years. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 1819?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 5119, matter of considering an application to hold the County Oakland Irish Fest event from Friday, September 6, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. and Saturday, September 7, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. The event will be held on Robina Avenue and 12 Mile Road between Tyler Avenue and Wakefield Road, hosted by the County Oakland Irish Fest, 2886 12 Mile Road, Berkeley, Michigan, 48072. Approval is conditional upon the submission of required items and documents prior to event dates.
Is there a motion to approve M 5119?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This is a returning event, which has grown in popularity each year it's been held. So, we're excited to see them coming back before the council to ask to, to hold it yet again. If you look to your application pack or the council packet, you'll notice the application is included, as is a narrative, financials, a map, some of their items that they need, some of the items that we require as part of the application process. Packet also includes departmental reviews and a memo from Chief Kane from our Public Safety Department. There are a couple of items that he notes that they, that the committee has been made aware of that are still outstanding, but again, as of last year and years prior, they've been able to supply those to us as the event got closer. So, all in all, the recommendation is that we approve this for another great year of celebrating the Irish heritage.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to tell you that the first thing is that the times that are in this motion are not the, are the times of the event, not the times of the road closing. So, the road closings will be extended. The closing on Coolidge will start at 4:00 a.m., which will give the DPW time to do some road maintenance out there and get some things done early in the day before the, before the festival starts. I've met with Steve Zanetti, the chairman of this, and we've gone through all the plans and I think that they're on track. Things, things are looking good. I will be writing an event plan for this to cover all the possibilities that could happen.
Okay. Additional questions or comments on the County Oakland Irish Festival? No. Okay. This is again, an event that we've had for a few years now. It's turned and it continues to grow, just like many of the events in the city continues to grow and have different events, different concerts, different people singing. I mean, just, it's just a tremendous day typically in the early fall in the city and hopefully we don't have the rain that we've had in the past. But one of those events that, that our residents look forward to every year. Councilmember Henon, you have something?
I think Roseanne may want to speak to something.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, we're here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know you're here. Yeah. Peggy, come on up here.
We do want to talk about Friday, how exclusive this is.
Yes.
As well, just in case you guys have further questions, so.
My name's Peggy Spilker. I'm the co-chair with Steve and Roseanne's on our committee. And this year, we're going to do on the Friday night, we have the event that's just in the on Robina and we're going to have that one be a Scottish event. So, we're going to have Highland dancers and bagpipes and Scottish food and a Scottish pub band. So, we're kind of, we think that's going to be fun.
Expanding.
Hopefully people will be coming dressed in their tartan and everything and then they'll all be in green the next day.
Thank you, Peggy, for being here today and for everything that you do. I know setting up the event is certainly, it takes a lot of time and effort and hopefully you do have time to enjoy the event once it actually gets here and you're not caught running around coordinating too much, although I know I saw you doing a little bit of that last year. But anyway, we do, thank you for coming and it is an event that we are excited to be able to, to host here in the city of Berkeley. Roseanne, anything you want to add?
No, other than as usual, which it sounds like it's going to be positive anyway. I always, as part of the chamber and a Berkeley resident, encourage any kind of extra events we can have downtown that draw people to our downtowns to see our, our shops and everything else going on and have an enjoyable time, so.
Well, thank you. We certainly agree with that. Thank you, Roseanne, and thank you, Peggy, for being here.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 5119?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Moving on, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M 5219, matter of authorizing a purchase for Microsoft Office Professional 2019 for $22,045.20 from R E M C and will be allocated to account number 101755986000 Computer Software.
Is there a motion to approve M 5219?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion approved by Mayor, Mayor Protem, support from Councilmember Dean. Are we going right to Stan or you want to?
I was just going to, I'll set it up quickly and Stan will knock it out. How's that sound? Included in your packet is not only a memo from the very well-dressed Stan Lisca, but also we have quotes that Stan was able to get from various vendors who sell specifically this product. So, you'll, you'll note that we did seek the, the best deal for this product as possible.
Stan?
Hi. How are you?
How's it going?
I'm coming to you just looking for purchase of Microsoft Office 2019. Unfortunately, Microsoft's lifecycle policy support as far as security updates and, and things like that will end next year. So, to pass any current and future audits, especially security audits that cover multi-department in, within the city, I'd like to purchase that so that we don't fail any audits specifically, so.
That is, that's a very good trait.
Yes, exactly.
We appreciate that.
It is a bitter pill to swallow when you want to spend $22,000 on simple word processing and spreadsheet stuff, but that's the cost of doing business, I've been told, so. and spreadsheet stuff. But that's the cost of doing business, I've been told, so.
Are there any questions for Stan as it relates to this office?
Thank you, Your Honor. Stan, in the memo, you talk about this going to a subscription model after support ends for this. Would you explain a little bit about how this works and how that will work?
Most of, in the IT world, especially in the software, the big names like Adobe and Microsoft, they prefer or will not do capital purchases anymore. Adobe has transitioned everything except a few products to a subscription model. It helps with their revenue and their shareholders, that they have a consistent cash flow coming in. Instead of us buying a piece of software for $22,000 and letting it last five years, they would prefer a monthly fee every month until they say that, oh, you need a new version, so.
So we won't have that with Office 19, but we will have that after that ends?
Yes. So year, probably year four, I'll start looking at transitioning as far as costs, things like that, to build it into the budget. You know, we will have to, Microsoft also encompasses an email product, too. So it might be encompassing the Office Suite plus email. And right now, as far as a subscription goes for that, that's $20 per user per month.
Wow.
So when you're talking 80, 90 users in the city, you're talking anywhere between 20 and $25,000 a year. And over five years, that's a lot of money, so.
Yeah, sweet. Additional questions for Stan? Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. So especially given today's, you know, IT world, I'm curious if you could outline some of what sort of these enhanced security measures with Microsoft 19 might actually look like?
A lot of them are specifically more of the complex macros, things like that. There are specifically identifiable security things that obviously hackers and researchers have found with ordinary documents. So a lot of those have been mitigated, and through the standard Microsoft monthly updates, they will continue to be supported. My Office 2010 will continue to work, you know, after the support ends, but the problem is, is just the security. And so as people find loopholes, especially on the home user side, that continue to use Microsoft Office, you know, it's better for us as far as just to prevent any issues in the long run, so.
Thank you. Additional questions for Stan? Well, seeing none, thank you for explaining to us what we're doing now and what we're looking at in the future.
Mm-hmm.
There is just no way to do, to have the security without Office? That's the only one?
Yeah, there's no, antiviruses will cover certain holes, but inherent within the program itself, there will be loopholes that nothing will be able to protect us from, so.
Quite a business model Microsoft has.
Ah, yes, correct.
Okay, well, seeing not a whole lot of options, anyway, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-5219?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you, Stan. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-5319, matter of awarding a contract for the 2019 CDBG sidewalk ramp replacement program to the lowest qualified bidder, Hartwell Cement Company of Oak Park, Michigan, in the amount of $76,903.50. The estimated total project cost of $101,784.47, including engineering and construction contingencies, will be allocated to account numbers 275940818037, account number 202464818000, and account number 202464821010.
Is there a motion to approve M-5319? So moved?
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Gavin, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, community development block grants, or CDBG funds, are a federal program that we receive through our partnership with Oakland County. And so each year, we look for projects. Sometimes we receive annual funds, but we bank those funds in order to make the most impactful project possible. That is what we've done up to this point, and you'll see the, what we've chosen to allocate this to this year is for what we call the removal of architectural barriers, is specifically how this is dubbed through the CDBG program. For us, that means the installation of sidewalk ramps, which comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Both Derek Schuler, as well as Eddie Zimich from HRC, have gone through, crafted a sidewalk replacement program for this year. It's gone out to bid now, and the results, as well as the memo from Derek, are included in your packet.
Derek?
Good evening. Thank you, Matt. So this year, we're on a, about a two-year cycle for CDBG sidewalk ramp replacements. So again, as Matt alluded to, we're trying to make the most efficient use of these funds, and we've decided that saving some money and doing these projects every two years is the best way to put this money to good use. So this is an area of the city that we have not had ADA ramps done before. So we'll be looking to do ramps at four intersections, Wiltshire and Cummings, Wiltshire and Bacon, Wiltshire and Phillips, and Wiltshire and Oakshire. So those four intersections will get new ADA compliant ramps, using these funds as well as major street funds. So working with HRC, we put together a bid package, went out to bid via Mitten, and received two bids for the project, and Hartwell Cement Company was the lowest qualified bidder. HRC's reviewed those documents, verified the references, and we're recommending approval to Hartwell Cement for this year's ADA sidewalk ramp replacement project. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Regarding schedule, I know that's one that folks are probably wondering about. We're looking to complete this work before school starts, so we'll be meeting with the contractor and the engineer after this meeting to talk about schedule. But so you're looking at work starting probably later this month and being completed by, you know, mid-August, thereabouts. And again, it's not gonna take too much time to do these four intersections. Within two weeks, I suspect that we'll have the work fully completed. So we'll have more information on that. We're looking to do the neighborhood news flyers again for the residents impacted, so we'll be distributing those via hand delivery, as well as posting those on the website, so that the residents that are directly impacted know what's going on. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Eddie, anything we're missing?
No, that's about it. If you have any questions on the contractor, we've worked with him many times over the years. We checked some additional references just for some recent work.
Okay.
And they're one of the contractors that do annual programs for a number of communities. So that's gotta speak good on the contractor, that they're welcome back multiple years for many local communities. So that's part of our recommendation, is to go with them on this project.
Thank you, Eddie. So questions for either Derek or Eddie from council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Derek, just out of curiosity, do you have any idea what percentage of these ramps we have done, or how many more we have to go?
So we've only done, at least in my time here, so it's been an every-other-year project, spending about this much money, councilmen. So we still have many ramps that we can do at intersections to make them ADA compliant. Again, we're only able to do a certain amount of these, and I've tried to distribute those through various sections of the city. So we'll continue to use these funds as they become available for that.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, you guys have done a wonderful job explaining how CDBG works, and the scope of our project, and most importantly, one, you know, the residents can expect to see this. One of the things, you know, Derek, I really appreciate the neighborhood flyers, getting that out, making sure that everyone is certainly aware of what's happening. I think that's very important. Sometimes things happen, and residents don't know what. Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's not us, but it's very helpful, certainly if they know, hey, this is coming. Okay, makes things a lot easier for everybody. So we appreciate the foresight in making sure that folks are aware of what's happening. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-5319?
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-5419, matter of awarding the 2019, 2020 pavement maintenance program to SJR Pavement Repair Incorporated, Warren, Michigan, at the unit prices provided not to exceed $110,000. This estimated total project cost of $113,500, including engineering, will be allocated at account numbers 202464818000, 203464818000, 202464821010, and 203464821010.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve M-5419?
Motion to approve.
Support approved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support from Councilmember Henan. I did get nervous for a minute there that we weren't gonna have any motion. I was...
Logetic, Derek.
Okay, but we're not there. Mr. Baumgart?
No, sir, we are not. We do have some information provided for you. Derek does a great job of outlining in his memo where these will be used, the justification, as well as the results of the bid, and included information from HRC on exactly how the engineering services will be working in support of this project as well. As you know, this is one of the many tools in our toolbox as far as keeping our roads in, hopefully, somewhat decent shape. And this is separate from the improvements we look to make based on the infrastructure millage that was approved. So this is funded mostly out of major streets and local street funds, which we get through a state allocation.
Mr. Schuler?
Thank you. And spray patch is a product that we're very familiar with. We've utilized this for the last five years, thereabouts, and have found it to be a long-lasting product, and has performed much better than cold patch. So we're looking forward to another year of spray patch on various locations around the city. We'll determine those locations at a later date. I've got a map in my office of where we've been and where we plan to be as far as needs. Certainly, many of our asphalt overlay streets are in need of this product, so we're looking forward to helping those streets out a little bit. And again, this is a product that we've had much better success with as compared to cold patch. So we're looking forward to that. We went out to bid, and I'm happy to report that we did receive three bids for this work, which is an improvement over previous years, so that's a good sign. What is also a good sign is that the price dropped a little bit for us. The low bid is a little bit less than we were paying for the last round, so that's also a good sign. Bids were opened, and I concur with HRC's recommendation that we award the bid to the lowest qualified bidder, which is SJR. They have won the bid the last round, and we're looking forward to patching up several streets in the near future. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We'll be doing spray patching as we typically do, which is two phases. So we'll do a phase this summer, and then after the winter months, I like to do another phase after the freeze thaw and the weather conditions to button things up right after the winter months as well. So we'll be looking to do this work essentially in two phases. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Eddie, again, anything else we're missing here?
Again, the contractor has done satisfactory work here in the last couple of years. This is more of a specialized method of preventive maintenance, if you will, but it's done the right way, and these guys have definitely done it the right way. Basically, what you're actually doing is if you have a pothole, it's not just a matter of throwing in cold patch and running away. These guys actually clean out the hole, first of all, blast it out. You put in a nice hot mix asphalt, which we will do a design mix review for, and then they roll it, and then they clean up any fragments that may have come away from during the rolling process. So it's a cleaner and a neater process, and it lasts, as Derek said, a lot longer than just a typical cold patch would. So, and we do recommend this method to be used more and more, actually, and it has helped many roads stay afloat, if you will, for many years, more than it would if you didn't do anything to it, so.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Schuler, Mr. Zimich? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, I know this is a, relatively speaking, new technology, and I think it's a really good technology. Do we continue to monitor and look at the state-of-the-art new things coming out for if there's, you know, anything better that we might be using in the future?
Absolutely. And there's many, I guess, trade groups or meetings that I have with these professionals, so we're always staying on top of this. Fiber-reinforced products are becoming more and more talked about. Obviously, they're more expensive, but they're claiming that they get more longevity, and that's something that we're looking to into the future as well, is fiber-reinforced asphalt as well. And so maybe that's the future, is fiber-reinforced spray patch to give us even more longevity. So that's something we'll continue to monitor. You don't necessarily want to be the first one to try it, but we'd love to see a demo and learn from somebody else's use of it as well.
Certainly. Thank you. Yeah, we don't need to be the beta testers for that. Additional questions, comments? Councilmember Blanchard?
Your Honor, just a quick comment. It was an extremely wise decision to go with spray patch, and I want to commend Derek and his department for doing that. I've, a couple of spots in the city that I watch all the time that have been spray patched, and it's just amazing how well they're holding up. So it's a great thing, and I thank you and your department for bringing this to us.
Thank you. And we have Sean Young, our foreman, actually pointed out an area that had been spray patched three or four years ago, where we actually had to pull the spray patch out because we were doing a concrete repair in the area, and he was surprised at how tough it was to get that material out of the hole. So that's exactly what you want to see. You want to see that binding strongly to the existing pavement.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody else want to learn more about spray patch? I mean, residents see it every day, and they probably don't realize now about how important it is and how it does extend the longevity of our roads. I mean, without this technology here, we would be searching for other technologies, and it gives us that time. And as Derek just mentioned, it is a lot stronger. I mean, it's tough to just kind of look at, especially if you look at it, you know, maybe it looks a little soft, but it's not. It cures, and it's very, very durable, and it's critical to keeping our roads in the shape that we have they're in. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-5419?
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you both. We'll bring up our next special guest tonight. We've been going through all of our departments. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11?
Motion Number M-5519, matter of approving the purchase of two 2020 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Marked Police Vehicles for $33,524 each, $67,048 total, one 2019 Ford Fusion SE All-Wheel Drive Unmarked Police Vehicle, and one 2019 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 XLT 5 1/2 foot box pickup truck for $34,765 for the Department of Public Safety from Signature Ford, 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 4887, at a total cost of $126,062, and purchased one animal control transport insert for the pickup from Maverick Incorporated, 152 South Zimmer Road, Warsaw, Indiana, 46580, for $9,076, for a total of $135,138. From the vehicle's account, 101310985000.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
M-5519 by Councilmember Blanchard, who's supported?
There you go.
No doubt that time.
Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can tell it's the beginning of the budget year. It's time for the purchase of new vehicles to help our police department, our public safety department maintain their high level of service. As noted in the director's memo here, these are replacement of existing vehicles, so this isn't expanding the fleet at all. This is maintaining it, making sure it's ready to serve at a moment's notice. These are all budget items, as we discussed. It's a lot for a single motion, but they are all purchased under the same county purchasing consortium, so that's why they're presented to you in this way. So that's one of the ways that we know that we're getting the best deal, even if we have to utilize the cooperative purchasing from next county over.
Thank you. Chief, before I even start, can we make sure Brian has one of these new vehicles?
Actually, 47 is a car he normally drives, so.
Okay.
It is time to replace our vehicles. We were here a year ago for the July meeting, and I will tell you, our last car is still not in service, so this is a year-round process. We just got done with last year, and we're starting this year. The two utility vehicles, pretty much, we've gone to all utility vehicles. They're very functional. They fit all the equipment we have. There really, there is not a better vehicle. They'll both be configured the way they are now. One's a semi-mark, one's a marked car. The Fusion, we kind of got behind over the years of our unmarked cars, and we're really suffering there. That kind of put our cars behind. We had to kind of rearrange some of the equipment in our semi-marked cars and get rid of two cars we didn't participate getting rid of, and now we have, we're using old patrol cars temporarily as unmarked vehicles. So that Fusion would be assigned. It's a plain car. It will be equipped with lights and sirens to respond to medicals. It will be equipped with lights and sirens to respond to medicals and emergencies and fires, but we want a car that kind of blended in, so that's the vehicle we chose. The, kind of the usual purchase is the animal control vehicle. It's replacing one that, boy, when I heard it was only a 2013, I was surprised because it looks a lot older than that, it's pretty beat up. And as everybody knows, it's not just the miles, it's the hours on the cars. They run quite a bit. So this will replace the current animal control truck. The insert will be air-conditioned heated, which is not currently happening. If you don't know, our current animal control officer, Kevin Palmer, is also a firefighter and emergency medical first responder, so we want to make sure that if he's got animals in the truck, they're going to be, they're going to be safe if he gets delayed, so that this is, we're really doing it right this, in my opinion, we're doing it right this time. And it's unusual, that pickup truck will be drop shipped to Indiana. They'll put the insert in, they'll drop ship it up to the dealership in, near Lansing, and then we'll actually take delivery from there. And then we'll purchase a cap afterwards to cover up the insert. Again, Ron Gabriel did a fabulous job, I can't say enough. I was really worried the Councilman Blanchard would ask me some questions about technical stuff, and luckily he's not, because if you want to learn about cars, I'm not the guy to learn from. And I also apologize for not having more pictures. I see Derek's, I'm always jealous, I'm going to try to find more pictures. And that's about it, if there's any questions.
I will say, Chief, your bar is a little bit lower than DPW, just because I think it's a little more visible. But no, what you mentioned about Ron is important. Ron does a tremendous job for the department, not only with maintenance and upkeep, but also specing out and making sure we have the right vehicles for our fleet. And as we saw earlier, you know, Brian's not driving around catching all those offenders if he isn't in a car that's reliable and he can get around and do all those things. So it is critically important for us to maintain our safety. Questions for the chief, or comments for the chief?
I just want to let you know that I'm encouraged to see the insert for the animal control truck. I think it's a necessary, you know, addition, and my one question is, is there a backseat in that truck?
There is.
Okay.
And right now, the truck he's driving does not have it, and if you get a chance, just walk by there and look at all the stuff.
Oh, it's terrible.
Because he's, he does, there's not enough room to carry the equipment he needs.
Right.
And this will provide that.
Good.
And all of our vehicles, my theory is, we could use any of them for any emergency, so this will have lights and sirens on it.
Nice.
Public safety officers can use these vehicles if they need to get somewhere, if we run out of vehicles, or for dream crews, we can use this for blocking traffic. So I try to be as multifunctional as we can to where we can all respond with whatever we have.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Sure. He didn't ask me about gear ratios. Oh, no.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Just another comment, Chair. The animal control vehicle is very important because that's also handling our animal control, but it's also a revenue source for us, and it doesn't look good for, we go to Royal Oak with a truck that's falling apart, and we're charging them for that service. So I think it's very important that we get this set up, excuse me, and get it right so we look like we're a professional organization, so.
Exactly.
Thanks for doing that. And by the way, I did check the GBWR on that truck to make sure it was okay.
Good, okay, good. I did too, I just wanted to make sure. I also, I should also thank Jim too from DPW. I'd be remiss, those, Jim and Ron really are a team, and they do a fabulous job.
And you mentioned Kevin and the work that Kevin does, not only on animal control side of things, but also firefighter and first responder, so he's pretty versatile if he is out there, and we need to make sure that his jobs are cross-trained. He can do all of them at one time and not have to worry about heading back to the station before he can get out to help somebody.
Actually, he was the first vehicle at a rollover at 12 in Coolidge, and, I'm sorry, 12 in Woodward, and he was the first one in a garbage truck fire we just had last. So he's out there driving around, so we need him ready.
Excellent. Any other questions for the chief? Seeing none, thanks, Chief, for being here. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M 5519?
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Chief. Ms. Boucher, will you please read item number 12 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R 1919, matter of authorizing the budget amendment of fiscal year 2018-19 as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R 1919?
Motion to approve.
Support. Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgartner?
I think, Mr. Mayor, as we close out the 1819 budget year, this is the last of our quarterly updates that we bring before the City Council to make amendments. Included in your packet is a very detailed memo. It outlines what we're looking for very well, from the city's finance director, Mark Pollak, as well as some background materials and some, an overview of the sort of where the city landed as far as the various departments that we're looking to amend. So Mr. Pollak is available for the specifics on this.
Mark, it is great to see you here, first of all.
Absolutely.
And secondly, what do we have tonight?
Well, I can certainly say I've never been happier to say I'm happy to be before you. Two weeks later than I had originally planned, but thank all of you, by the way, for your kind words, well wishes. I appreciate it. It certainly came unexpected to me. You know, when you think you're healthy, something like this can pop up on you, so I am happy to be here, I'm happy to be back in the fold. I wasn't in the hospital very long, I was, they basically said, get back to work. I appreciate the mayor's comments. I think he believed, he actually spoke with my wife, which I greatly appreciated, and I know she did too. He thought maybe the budget process had something to do with my heart issues, but I can assure him the process here is tremendous. You all do a great job. You know, Matt makes it easier, the directors here all do a great job. It's commendable, and I make it, you may get tired of hearing me say that when I'm up here, but I don't get tired of saying it and letting you know you're doing a great job. But honestly, the amendments for a budget of this size are really not very numerous. Some of the larger ones are really just going to be carry-forward capital that we didn't expend by last week, that'll be moved forward and also be before you in the first quarter of the next, well, the current fiscal year now. But, you know, some of the larger items, I think I mentioned in there, the amendments bring your general fund deficit to about 1.2 million. I looked at some history, and it's not uncommon that you'll come in somewhere in 93%, 95% of your expenditures, which means you'll probably end up closer to 600,000, half a million in deficit. Some of that will be carried forward for capital next year, which you'll have before you, but again, it's the commitment to, especially the capital infrastructure improvements that this council and this community has embraced. One of the issues coming forward is that capital improvement plan that the residents approved, we rolled back a little bit, less than two mils. That, along with other monies that are committed in this current fiscal year that just started today, will be important, and I think as much as a five-year commitment and probably beyond that, because that, that, I just, in fact, I just found one of the flyers that you issued to residents on that, is a 10-year commitment to roads. And then your water and sewer infrastructure, which you'll get more reports and information on, are certainly, it's huge for the residents here because you're going to do a lot of this without additional debt. So the amendments themselves, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, but overall, you're going to be really close. I know Councilmember Henin asked for, and I will produce for council. How did we do from our original budget? And I think looking at those numbers, you'll see that you do a really good job. And again, I commend you and I commend the department heads for coming up. It's not easy to do from year to year, and then especially with capital, because, you know, you're making a commitment and estimates that can change, and you can see from tonight that estimates that your directors make are very close in the end to what you actually expend, but, like I say, I try to be as detailed as possible. It's hard to make numbers interesting, it really is. I chose to do this for a living, but, and I do love it, but it's certainly, it's a tremendous process, and like I say, I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions you might have, or even some general ones, but the amendments themselves are not, really not that numerous for a budget of this size.
So, Mark, when you say deficit, that word means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. So if you could just explain a little bit more, that does not mean that the city is now operating $600,000 in the hole, that is not what that meant?
Well, your main operating fund being the general fund. You ended up with a surplus last year of over $1 million. And again, the original budget showed, I think, a slight surplus, and you ended up, some of the capital got pushed forward, and then the expenditures themselves came in under budget. But your general fund fund balance is in excess of $6 million. So if we end up, let's just say we do end up somewhere around $600,000 deficit for the year, that just means your expenditures exceeded your revenues by 600,000. You're still going to have a very healthy $5.5 million general fund fund balance. Your water and sewer fund has retained earnings. The difficulty with your water and sewer fund is you really want to look at cash, because retained earnings is, in the water and sewer fund, is mostly in the ground. It's your infrastructure. So it's hard really to look at that and say, well, we've got $15 million in the water and sewer fund, can't we do a whole bunch of work? The commitment is about 2.2 million a year for your water and sewer infrastructure, so, you know, your deficit is the current year and just means you're expecting to bring in a little less revenue than you're expending, and a lot of the capital commitment leads to that.
Right. So that's what I was getting to, so the deficit just means that we invested in capital this year, more so than we did last year, which drew down our fund balance in the general fund, but that was because we put it back into the city.
Yeah, and you will, quarterly, you'll get a report, which I think you've probably done in the past, where you'll amend the current year budget, and there will be some capital amendments, which are really just carry-forward from the current year into next year.
Right. Other questions for Mr. Pollak on the finances? This is our, obviously, year-end budget amendments. Councilmember Henin?
And we're talking about a 500, a $5 million, $6 million balance in our general fund. Compared to our overall budget, that is a pretty healthy percentage.
Yeah, yeah, you're, I think the expenditure, amended expenditures are a little over 12 million this year, so you've got close to 50% in reserves, so that's tremendous.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments for our finance director?
Well, again, thank you, Mark, for being here. It is wonderful to see you back in front of us, as we mentioned at the beginning, and glad that you are happy and healthy and ready to get back at it, and certainly glad that it was not our budget process that did that to you. We'll lay that at the feet of our neighbors a little bit to the north of here, but thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions and comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 1919?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the next item up on our agenda?
Communications, beginning with Councilmember Dean.
So my report on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board is as follows. Storytime at JCPark is July 11 at 10:00 a.m. JCPark Jamboree, July 18 at 6:00 p.m. Free ice cream, bouncers, you can tie dye shirts, either bring your own, or there will be shirts there to purchase. Face painting and all the other fun stuff that you would expect at the JCPark Jamboree. Movie in the Park is August 1 on the big screen at Merchants Park, 7:00 p.m. The feature is yet to be determined. Storytime at Merchants Park is August the 6 at 10:00 a.m. And please check the community center for all the senior activities and trips outings that the Parks and Rec Department has going on. There's a ton of stuff there, so check there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henin?
Yes, the, our minor, the zoning board of appeals, they are meeting on Monday, July 8 at 7:30 in city council chambers here. Again, no cases to hear, but they'll be reviewing their bylaws on electing officers. The tree board, they'll be meeting also on Monday, July 8 at 7:00 in the library. And if you want to help get more trees out into the city, the tree board and the beautification committee are going to be doing a tree walk on Saturday, July 13 at 9:00 a.m. to distribute door hangers to anybody in the city that doesn't have a tree in their easement to remind them of the program and how it works. Will be meeting at the parking lot across from the high school on Catalpa, and that's Saturday, July 13 at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Environmental Advisory Committee met, a couple of discussions about different projects, one being the potential for a rain barrel program. Also talked further about implementation of the draft energy plan, and then further discussed Electronic Recycling Day, that hopefully we'll have a little bit more information about it coming up very shortly for you. Planning Commission met as well. There was a public hearing and a proposed ordinance adopted by the Planning Commission on allowing daycare centers in the office district and local business district. The next meeting will be July 23 at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Coolidge Task Force did not have a July meeting, and I wanted to wish everybody a safe and happy 4th of July, and then moment of personal privilege, if that's all right, today's my son's third birthday, so while I'm fairly confident my wife will use these meetings and me talking to him, or talking during them, as a sleep aid for him, if he is up, I would, I would just like to say, happy third birthday, little monkey, so that's about it.
You certainly are able to do that anytime you want. Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates as well. Our Downtown Development Authority, first, I'd like to thank all the volunteers that serve on their subcommittees and are working their way through to the board. That's fantastic. And looking ahead, coming up this Saturday, July 13, we have the Berkeley Street Art Fest in partnership with the DDA in the chamber. It's going to be from 11:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. throughout the downtown. And then coming up on Thursday, July 18, is the Couples Night Out with shopping-dining experience, and there'll be a Robina Rhapsody going on as well. And then even further out, on August 22, there'll be the Second Robina Rhapsody, along with a day-long district-wide sidewalk sale, to create even more excitement and activity in our downtown. To the Historical Committee, I'd also like to thank them for all of their hard work, the volunteers that are serving on the committee, and those that we reappointed today. And thanks to the city clerk, I do have the latest mug here with me, so if you want one of your own, it's awesome, we care. You can get this in many of the locations throughout the, throughout the city. In turn, the Historical Committee would like to extend their gratitude and appreciation to Parks and Rec, in particular, Director Carlson and Carlton and the staff over there for letting the Historical Committee have the opportunity to walk through the ice arena one last time to identify artifacts of significance and historical meaning to the communities, that those can be preserved and celebrated in the museum as we make that change in the next couple of weeks. The Technology Advisory Committee, I'd like to thank them for all of their hard work and great contributions thus far. It's a relatively new committee, and they're off to a strong start, and we've added some great talent to them again tonight. They met last week's Wednesday, and we spoke with a technology provider about a civic, civic application platform that might be able to automate and streamline many of the processes that we do internally and provide a compelling technology experience for residents that choose to use that avenue to interact with the city in many ways. So we're excited to see what kinds of things come up with that and future conversations with additional vendors that we may be able to bring technology to bear through the budget process and the cycles in years ahead. And finally, I'd like to thank Bridget Marley, one of our residents here, for making a quote visible to me, so I was able to keep, see an eye on it here. It goes something like this, actually, it goes exactly like this. Repetitive complaining will attract things for you to complain about. Repeated gratitude will attract things for you to be thankful about. The last couple of meetings, I've started a little theme here, so I figured I'll just wrap up the trilogy by taking that quote as an opportunity to, again, remind ourselves of how amazing this city is, all the great things that we have, all the great volunteers that do so many tremendous things for it. We know that because we're here, we live in it, we walk around it, but you would not think so if you, if you saw an online presence of a lot of what's being communicated out there. That dichotomy still puzzles me. I know a lot of folks talk about the value of free speech, which I absolutely think is fantastic, but it doesn't seem like we believe in equal speech, in the sense that not everybody has an opportunity to even see some of these messages, let alone have a forum to be able have a forum to be able to respond in kind. You know, back in the day, when somebody had a political satire or a comment or something like that, it would get published in the newspaper, and everybody could see it, and everybody could respond to that. We don't live in that kind of an age anymore, and so it will be, it's incumbent upon us to be insured, that, to ensure that we maintain that civility, to really make Berkeley as, as visibly awesome as we know it is internally, right? I mean, it says right here, "We care," and it doesn't mean we just care about some people. I think it's important that we, we take this stuff seriously, and, and as the quote mentioned, find things to be gratitude, to express gratitude over, because there's a whole lot of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Stedman?
Thank you. First of all, the citizens engagement advisory committee meets this Wednesday, the 3rd, and at that meeting, we will follow up on communications plan progress, and we will discuss strategies for gathering more block ambassador applications. And we are, the purpose of this committee is to address just what Councilmember Baker was just describing, getting more people involved in a different way than, than, than we used to get involved. And over the years, since I've lived in Berkeley and been involved with the city, and prior to that, been involved with the school district, I have known hundreds and hundreds of volunteers. And that is one thing that we can say about this community, is there are volunteers out there willing to stand up anytime. Saturday, or not, I'm sorry, the 10th of, of July is the beautification committee meeting that I'm on, and they are in the process of sprucing up the Oxford Towers Park, and they planted flowers on it, on it on Sunday, so just drive by and see what kind of work they've done on that so far. And the library board meets on the 17th. And as I say every month, there are too many things to read, so please, just check the internet and their web, website to find out all the wonderful programs that are being offered this, this summer, for adults, for preschoolers, for moms and babies, dads and babies, teenagers, and so on. But check the library website, and you'll, I'm sure you'll find something that applies to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, your honor. I've got a couple of things tonight. The 4th of July is this Thursday, and I want to make sure that you're aware of the dangers of fireworks. I want to remind everybody that sparklers, which we let our kids and grandkids play with, burn at 2,000 degrees. There's a poster here and there's one over there. You don't think about sparklers, but they're very dangerous and they're, get very hot. So please be careful with all fireworks, and especially sparklers, this holiday weekend. The Berkeley Chamber of Commerce and the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority will sponsor the 3rd Annual Berkeley Street Art Fest on Saturday, July 13th. The Street Art Fest is conducted on Coolidge from Kitalpa to Wilshire. The Coolidge area downtown will be transformed with art as professional and amateur chalk artists create colorful street art with chances to win prizes. So there's money available. Commissioned artists will be creating murals on buildings throughout the city, children will have the opportunity to create their own art in the children's tent area also. And people throughout the area will have the opportunity to watch artists as these masterpieces come to life in, in the streets of Berkeley. So if you can, get down there, watch the artists do it. David Zen is back again this year, he's an excellent, excellent artist, and he's really fun to watch, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
I think it's mayor, as we alluded to throughout the meeting, it is, we are celebrating Happy New Year here at city hall, as well as throughout the city. Instead of champagne, though, we celebrate with investments into the community. As, as you saw, another, the number of budget of items that we're getting the ball rolling on are not just, you know, agenda items to be, to be discounted, but they are truly investments in services and, and physical investments into our parks. Then they come to this council through a very thoughtful process with dedicated public servants who are, who are people, who are passionate about making our community better, even, you know, those that live here, those that don't. We, we just have a great staff who are bringing these things to you today. And in addition to that, you know, there are, we're going to start to see some physical progress on updates to our fire hall, and the progress on converting the ice arena to open green space, physical, like I say, physical changes and investments in the community. We're, we're very, very proud of these, so that's how we celebrate New Years.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to piggyback on Councilman Blanchard's comments a little bit and make my own annual public safety announcement about lawful fireworks usage. It is that time of year, as council recalls, based on our, our discussion and our, our action earlier this year, the state law and our corresponding local fireworks ordinance were changed to significantly reduce the number of days in a year that fireworks may lawfully be used. However, having said that, the time surrounding the 4th of July, when fireworks may be used actually has expanded, such that lawful fireworks season actually began last Saturday and will continue through this Friday night, July 5th, where fireworks can be lawfully used. However, they can only be used up till 11:45 p.m. Anything later than that, or I guess after midnight, earlier than that, is not lawful. We do not permit the sky lanterns to be used, which are the devices you light, and they float off in the sky to whereabouts unknown, and that's the danger of them. Nor can you use commercial-grade or, you know, any other heavy artillery. Only, only the fireworks that can be lawfully purchased at a licensed dealer that are, at this time of year, kind of pop up all over the place. The other thing I want to point out, because I think it's often overlooked, is even though it's permissible to use fireworks during this, this week-long period, you actually can only lawfully use them on your own property or property that you have permission to be on. You cannot ignite fireworks or land your fireworks on other people's property. Last thing I'll say is, is not a legal thing as much as just a, a request to everybody to please be considerate of the elderly, war veterans, people with cats and dogs and other folks who may be especially sensitive to the, the noise. So have fun, but, but, you know, be considerate of your neighbors as well, and be safe.
Excellent.
And happy 4th of July to everybody.
Thank you. I have a few items tonight. First off, last, last meeting, I made a pretty egregious error in my communications at the end. I was talking about the Art Bash and volunteers, and we've heard a lot about volunteers today, and I was trying to thank everybody who plays a role in putting that event on. And one, one group that I left out was our DPW department. You know, sometimes I think we take for granted, or at least I did, what they do and the role that they play, and we heard it today from Councilmember Blanchard, the times of the event are the times of the event, but the setup and the take-down and the cleanup, that's, that's above and beyond. And yes, our DPW, their, their employees, but they routinely go above and beyond for the city and put in a ton of time. And so I, I definitely wanted to, want to apologize for, for that, to err on my part and to make sure that, that I addressed that today. Without them, we wouldn't have the events that we talked about, you know, the County Oakland Irish Fest, the Art Bash, and everything else that happened. So thank you, DPW, for, for everything that you do. We started out the meeting with amending our agenda to take off the draft energy plan. Councilmember Gavin mentioned that, made that motion. That will be available on the website very soon, so that residents have plenty of opportunity to look at it and go through it before it comes back on our next agenda, at which time we'll take action on it. But there will be ample time between this meeting and our next meeting for every resident to have an opportunity to take a look at that. Like Isaac slash DJ, it's, it's my sister's birthday today, so thank you for, for that. She is not three. I will not say how old she is, but she is not three, but happy birthday, Kate. And finally, we move into July here. The dads' club and the moms' club have wrapped up their regular seasons, their spring and summer seasons, and I want to take a second again to thank all of those volunteers who put in tremendous amount of time, again, for the boys and girls of not only Berkeley, but the surrounding areas as well, especially the folks that run those respective organizations. It is an incredible amount of time and care and effort that they put into organizing it, and then after it's organized, I want to thank the coaches as well. And I speak from personal experience, as someone who grew up playing in the dads' club. Coaches, you have no idea the impact that you have on these young boys and girls' lives, and, and you won't probably until they get a little bit older. But your role models, your mentors, and aside from the baseball and softball skills, they're, they're learning life skills and life lessons, many of which, at least through my coaches, were taught of the tough love variety. And maybe that's what they remember, but they remember what you taught them as well when you were yelling at them to do the right thing. I want to give a special shout-out to the dads' club, this is my Berkeley Cubs hat here, for their summer classic, that was a couple of weekends ago. We had a ton of folks that came into the city, and the dads' club did an absolutely tremendous job of organizing the event, preparing for the event, the fields, I mean, you got in between every game, you have to re-line the fields, you have to rake the fields, just a, a ton of work that goes into that. And also, I'm almost positive, it was our first weekend without rain and, and warm weather. So we've, we've had another one of those since, so that was absolutely tremendous. We also saw three Cubs teams win championships in, in that tournament, so three of our own Berkeley Cubs teams won, and it might have been four had we not had to have a little Berkeley-on-Berkley crime in the nine U division. The nine U team ended up having to play the eight U team, but they both had made it to the finals. It was just, just a great weekend, a ton of family, a ton of parents, and I want to thank both the dads' club and the moms' club for everything that they've done, for the years and years and decades that they've done it, and continue to do for our young boys and girls, learning, learning those games. With that, I would also like to wish everybody a very happy 4th of July, stay safe if you are using fireworks. And we will be going on a little bit of a, a break here. Our next meeting will not be for, at least until, until August, so we will see everybody in August if something comes up. We certainly will not hesitate to have a special meeting. Enjoy the month of July, and with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Stedman, who supported that. I feel like I've been picking the wrong name all day today. Councilmember Henin, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. The July 1st, 2019 meeting of the 37th council is adjourned.